Good evening, everybody. So we have engaged in a long and thoughtful process to get to tonight. And here we are. So I'm going to provide you with an overview of the entire process. And then kind of talk about the district facilities committee, the work we engaged in, the data we looked at. And then we'll kind of dig into the some there are four different options for you all to kind of consider and look at. Of course, you could come up with a fifth and sixth option that you prefer. You're not taking formal action tonight, but we are looking for direction. So that we can get the construction bond, construction team started on the drawings, the planning and before we go out to any contracts, of course, the contracts come before you for actual approval. But this is like the last stop before we go into planning mode and scoping out the different projects in the timeline. Okay, next slide, please. Oh, I can drive. Can I go, can I drive forward and back? Great, I'm going to go forward one more. And then I'll go back. So I want to let everybody know who was on the district facilities committee. So myself, Heather, we had Shiram also was a member, we had Chris, we had Carlos. Anne, who's back here, coordinator of school operations, safety, we had Teresa, who will not be here tonight, she was unable to attend. Hillary, we have Alex from Gilbane Construction, and then we had Stephanie, our co-architect for the bond. So that was who was on the district facilities committee. And we met, you can see the dates, we started meeting in October, we had our final meeting on March twentieth. And now I'm going to go back, she said, I can drive, right? So now I'm going to go back to this slide, which gives you an overview of the entire process. Since the voters approved the measure M bond back in March of 2020. Was an eighty million dollar bond, which is a very generous amount of money for facilities in our size district. So once that was approved, there was a member and planning committee that met the fall of 2020. And put together basically a three phased approach. Thinking about the bond in three different phases. So you sell the bond in three phases, you have to kind of scope out what you think the projects are going to be. Likely high level, that was brought before the board in January of 2021, that is before I got here. And then construction started on really phase one and some of phase two. Construction projects started in 2021, sort of ended phase one in 2024, which is just last year. Those were mostly focused on aging infrastructure and safety. So maybe the stuff you can't see, but you might feel if you're in a building like the heat in the cooling. Maybe some electricity and some other kinds of things. Certainly, our fencing project was actually, we moved fencing sort of into that phase one timeline, but it was also phase two money. So a little bit of phase one, a little bit of phase two. And the charge was to go out to the community and do some actual engagement since it was passed in 2020, a lot had shifted and changed. So we went out to all of the set school sites. Once to talk with the principal, assistant principal, sort of the site leadership team. And then another round of community meetings that were held at each of our school sites. And MEF, we had a meeting here at the district office. I do want to remind you that Anderson had their field refurbished or completed in phase one, that was a decision the board had made. Prior to my arrival. So really, when we talk about community engagement around the fields and the tracks and all of that. Anderson was not included in that round, that was really at the site level with the principal, assistant principal and such. Because it was already completed before we started this engagement process. So we did the engagement, we put the district facilities committee together. We worked through a ton of data, which the public has access to all of it in this presentation, all of those links are live and transparent. Everyone can look at the information that we did. And now we're here tonight for the study session where we are hoping to get some direction from you. I almost said next slide, but that would be talking to myself. So the the language in the measure M bond. Specifically, we will repair and replace leaky roofs, failing and inefficient HVAC, electrical wiring, aging infrastructure. That was really kind of what was in that phase one. Upgrade safety and security system, fire alarms, communication, security cam- cameras fencing. That was part of phase one and part of phase two. It said that we would ensure that children's playgrounds, walkways, fields meet current health and safety standards. We would keep schools safe, clean, well maintained. And we would update student learning environments for the twenty first century learning. Which is a very, very broad category that encompasses everything from collaboration, communication, critical thinking. And there's one more C, which I have communications, maybe, forgotten. It does say it later on in the presentation. So the three phases that you all basically approved very high level in January of 2021. Were were phase one, thirty four million dollars. That was technology budget, half of the roofs, half of the HVAC, shade structures, fencing, lighting, security, paging systems, bathrooms. And then phase two was to include the other half of the roofs, the other half of the HVACs. And starting on fields and tracks, as I said before, that Anderson track was actually in phase one. Not in two or three. And then we you high level approved eighteen million dollars for phase three, which would be the other half of the tracks and fields and potentially a gym, an additional gym for the Moreland School District. So when we went out and did our community engagement, we did talk about the some of the assumptions and shifting priorities that just time have has gone by, you know, five years now since the original passing of the bond. And we couldn't have predicted a pandemic, actually, in the same month that the voters approved an eighty million dollar bond. Is the same month that the COVID pandemic shut down schools for quite some time. And so that was not anything anybody could anticipate. Additionally, we now have the expansion of transitional kindergarten for all four year olds, which does have an impact on facilities. Space bathrooms, we also had Governor Newsom had a new before and after school program initiative, which would be free for students that qualify the extended learning opportunities program. Which also put a strain and an impact on our facilities because you need space for those before and after school programs. At the time, pre-COVID, when this was all approved, we had about forty six hundred students. We now are down to about thirty eight hundred students, so a significant decline in enrollment, even for, you know, a small district. And then, of course, increased costs due to inflation and supply chain, a lot of that was due to the COVID pandemic. This had nothing to do with the tariffs at the time, but I could also put tariffs upon the assumptions and shifting priorities. That could also have an impact. And then one of the things that happened about a year and a half ago, was it two years ago, was safety and perimeter fencing topic in school districts after a tragedy that happened in another state. And so it was forefront of site administrators minds, educators mind. And that is when we decided to move forward with a perimeter fencing project. That was not part of the original sort of planning of the bond, it was going to be some fixing some gates and some, you know, some perimeter things, but it was not a fully fencing project. So when we talk about what was originally in phase one, phase two and phase three from that January twenty twenty one session that you all approved, these things have shifted what ends up being in phase one, phase two and phase three. So when we went out to the community, we made those assumptions very clear. And basically what we said was that there really was not enough funding at the end of the day. To build a whole new gym for the Morelands District. That gym was not decided where it would be, it was not decided if it would be. It was kind of left to be determined and as as we sit now and as we sat when we did the community engagement, it's just not a reality in terms of funding for that. So we we took that off the table as an option for the the facilities, a committee didn't discuss it, just was no no longer an option, we did not have the funding to do that. What we did ask the community to talk about was because this is what listed in the measure M bond internal scope of work. We asked school communities to talk to us about their playgrounds. Their ideas for fields, their ideas for tracks and their ideas for twenty first century learning, and there's that for C, communication, collaboration, critical thinking and creativity, creativity, I forgot. And so what we did is we went around and we had some colored dots. If you've ever been to a community engagement meeting in Moreland, you probably have seen some red, yellow, blue or green dots, which we had. And we had people talk in small groups, go around to each one of these sections and talk about for their community, what would they prioritize? And then we had people go around and put dots to to prioritize within that committee. And pictures of those dots and those posters and a summary of those community meetings. As well as a summary of the principal meetings is what's in what we call the big duck. It's really called measure M, phase two and phase three facility improvements, community engagement and planning. I call it the big dot dot because it's eighty two pages long. This is also posted for the community so they can see that we captured their thinking, their thoughts, their dots. And we took pictures of the real thing. We wanted to make sure we are fully transparent with that. So then we took all of the feedback that we received from the principals. Assistant principals, as well as the community meetings, and we put them into for each school, what are the top priorities for each school? When you settle down and put all that together and you kind of, you know, look at how many dots different things got along with what the principals were saying. And those top priorities ended up being about fifty six million dollars worth of hopes. Just the top priorities, if you were to talk about all of the things, I think it was, you know, more than the bond itself, more than the million dollar bond itself, however. What we have left in phase two and phase three, not already allocated to a project, it's about thirty two million dollars. So even with the top priorities from each school community. The district facilities committee had to even whittle that down to prioritize within that so that we could meet our budget.
These are the options fit within that thirty two million.
One option does not fit into that thirty two million, and so we'll go over that option. It's not far off, but we felt like we talked about it as a committee, it was only fair to share it so that the public knew we discussed it, talked about it, considered it. So the district facilities committee, and you can please stop me at any time and ask questions. You might want to see some of the data first, but please know you can stop. We wanted to look at some objective criteria, the number of students that would be served by each project was site capacity. The condition of the existing fields and facilities, when was the timing of the last upgrade? What are the cost of the proposed projects against the overall budget? And we also kind of looked at the timeline, the bond takes us through the twenty nine thirty school year. That would be like the end of phase three. So each one of these links have the data that the facilities committee looked at, these are live, the public has access to them. We looked at enrollment, enrollment projections, campus size acreage, there was a playground study done around sort of safety and per play perfect square footage per kid. Square foot of play per student. Shade structure, and then we did campus aerial views of the existing campuses. And when you do, I'm not going to, I don't think I'm going to dive into one. No, not going to dive into one now because here it won't let me because I'm on Zoom. But if you were at home and you clicked on those links, you can open up the aerial view, which is what the facilities committee looked at. And you would see that our fields are in dire need of improvements and enhancements. So again, fifty some million dollars worth of priorities, thirty two million dollars worth of actual money. The district facilities committee still had to prioritize within the top priorities. And so they started with this conversation around what should, what should be our baseline for every school? What's our standard essentially for Moreland schools? And then these are not ranked, these are not prioritized, they are just they are just the things that the committee said that our playgrounds should meet the needs of the students. That there should be shade structure in the lunch areas, shaded areas in playgrounds. Now shaded areas may not mean shade structures, it could mean trees, right, shaded areas for for kids to play. Fields that are safe, multi-use rooms that have tables and benches that are usable and safe and stages that are safe and can be reconfigured for different performances and such. And also outdoor learning areas or an area for like performance outside performances or outside. I don't want to say field trips, I'm thinking of assemblies. So the team also talked about different kinds of options for fields and tracks. So when you talk about fields, you can discuss purely synthetic turf. You could talk about purely using natural grass, or you could use some combination of turf and grass. When you talk about track, you could talk about asphalt, basically cement. I think that's what we have around some of our elementary schools now anyways. You could talk about using synthetic turf and painting a track around it, just a different color. Or you could talk about decomposed granite, decomposed granite is what we have, I believe, at EDS and MMS currently. And track, did we put, no, synthetic?
The rubber is
The rubber is
So it's either asphalt, just asphalt, and we have state country or vapor and flatter, or it could be asphalt with rubberized coating.
Got it. Okay. So actually, I wanted, I think you are, who's coming to talk about turf versus grass? Okay, Stephanie, come on, introduce yourself for the camera. And then, oh, right. Is looking at you. And what we wanted to do, because we did this with the committee, is talk about both the benefits and the drawbacks of grass versus synthetic turf. So that you have, you also had that information as you are thinking about considerations.
Sorry, just before we get into that, so for all of the schools were mostly their priorities, like dealing with field.
Fields, tracks, playground.
Okay, so thank you, Stephanie Duran Hall with Coed Architecture, architect for the school district for going twelve years now, I think. I'm glad to be here. And so let's talk first about turf or our grass benefits. So when I say turf, I mean synthetic turf. When I say grass, I mean natural grass, just in case I don't put synthetic in front of or natural in front of one or the other. So the grass benefits, so from environmental standpoint, it grass absorbs carbon dioxide, it reduces heat, improves air quality, supports biodiversity. Player's safety is another aspect. Some studies suggest that athletes actually have less injuries on natural grass. It's important to point out, though, that the studies that have been done are comparing really fields, grass fields that are in excellent condition, right, a lot of them are done with NCAA. You know, division one grass, that's not what we have. I know, it's a shock to you, but it's not. So and just so you know, the concept behind that is that with synthetic turf, when you plant your foot on it, if you have, you know, rubber on the bottom of your shoes, that your foot is going to stick more. So if you pivot and turn, you're more likely to put strain on your knees. If you're on grass, you don't stick the same way, and so that's primarily the the big injuries, I guess, that will come from, that make from synthetic. As far as aesthetics and comfort, grass is, I mean, I will say it's much more beautiful when it's well cared for. It's a natural look, obviously, it feels soft, there's like, there's a sensory thing, I think, that we have when we sit on and feel natural grass. Playing performance and experience wise, it's more natural. I think if you were to ask, say soccer players, for example, which surface they prefer to play on. They would most likely, I mean, most of the ones I know at least, and professionals, they prefer to play on grass. It's a better, one is injury related and the other is heat, which we'll talk about in a minute. But it also feels much more natural and it's softer. It's cooling effect, you know, it's much cooler than synthetic turf, it has natural cooling through evaporative transpiration. And the cost, it has a lower installation cost than synthetic turf. So let's talk about the drop. So it has higher maintenance costs, and we actually do have a slide to give you all an idea of the comparative cost for maintaining both surfaces. So with grass, you have frequent watering, you have mowing, fertilization, pest control measures. You know, we've had a lot of problems with ground squirrels in the district. And water usage is a big one, because obviously with natural grass, we need to irrigate. We don't live in a very humid environment, so we have to do it artificially, let's say, with with irrigation. And durability and playability, this is sort of the the one I think is the biggest makes this the biggest downside for a school is that you have, you know, say four hundred kids playing on grass every day at recess and lunch recess, and then after school as well. It's a lot of kids playing on a natural surface, it gets torn up over time. It's just a lot of concentrated use. And so when that happens, the grass, you know, gets torn up, then it starts raining, it gets muddy. And so that that makes it a little bit difficult, it's a challenge anyway for the ground staff to to keep working.
Yeah. Can I ask a question about the types of options for grass? Obviously, there's different grass levels, and like you said, we're not NCAA, but
Right.
What are the options for? Are there different options for the types of grass that can be implemented?
So there's, yeah, there's different species or different, what's the word I'm looking for? Let's just say species of grass, what's that? Right. And of grass, and so you pick certain ones for for different. And so, but the that the durability of the playing surface doesn't change a lot depending upon what of actual grass that you're using, it's not like if you, you know, get X grass, it's going to, you know, perform much, much better than another one.
Is there a large cost to the different types of delta?
There's there's not. It's just the
Carlos, can you come up here because it's a public meeting and you, the owl needs to pick you up.
Carlos Salavero with the district facilities department. So the there isn't a cost difference with the different species, not, that's something very measurable. But there is a durability, there's some grasses that are more durable, more all around type of use. It's not just for soccer, because soccer, you want a really thin carpet, if you will. A little bit thicker. So we would get a a species that that's right. More general purpose that that's more favorable for the constant use and use that we have.
Yeah, sure. So, yeah.
So then for the water usage, do we already have an irrigation system in place or have it, does that need installation?
We have irrigation in place. And a couple of slides further down the line, I'll talk about the comparison. We do have a system in place in some campuses, we might have a a water pressure issue that might need to be upgraded if it keeps the grass. So we definitely need to address the the clocks and the timers and and valves and things like that that kind of creates the whole system.
Thank you.
We're not, we're not making a decision on A or B or C today, right?
We need feedback, we do need
We do, yeah.
It's not a formal vote, but it is direction, so as Cooper was saying before, once we're done here, they're going to go forward with collecting possible contracts for our consideration and all of
There's some bits of information that would be good. Because I was trying, like, this morning, trying to kind of picture how to compare each of these in an easy way. It really was tough to do.
We will try to do that for you in the presentation. And so let's talk about that when we get to the different options, we think that they're pretty much the same with the exception of MMS. Yeah, everything else is the same with the exception of what do we do at MMS.
So, is it okay if I continue? So we have some unsafe condition that's created by geese and squirrels. These holes that, you know, ankle breakers. From a construction standpoint, the challenge with the grass is the timing. Because you need a grow in period before it can be used, and the grow in needs to occur during the more season. And so that that's a All right, let's talk about turf benefits. So turf, as we discussed, has a lower maintenance cost, lower needs. Doesn't require mock watering, mowing, edging or fertilization. And they can use water sometimes. And they can use water sometimes to cool the field down, um, in this, you know, when it's hot out. Um, it saves a lot of water, because there's no irrigation, like I just said, needed. Um, and from an environmental standpoint, you eliminate the need for pesticides and for fivers. Um, animal deterrence is a big factor, because squirrels and geese don't like turf, um, probably for key reasons, and also doesn't feel comfy to them. Um, durability and all weather playability. So this is probably the biggest upside to synthetic turf, is that it looks good all year round, because it's made to be, made to be like that, drains very well, doesn't get muddy. Um, you can use it every day for the entire year. I mean, maybe not in like heavy, heavy rain, but that's for the district to decide. Um, player's safety is a benefit, because there's no rats in the sprinkler heads. You know, aside from the idea that maybe it is less safe with knee injuries, but in terms of, um, you know, running into holes and things like that, or hitting a sprinkler head, that's not an issue. Um, aesthetic, it always looks green. And if you look at the aerial photos of the schools, you'll see that some of the field is green, um, but certainly not all of it. Um, the construction, the field can be constructed year round, and it's usable, usable immediately after installation. And the striping can be put on the fields, you don't have to re-stripe it all the time, which is a benefit, I think, to the, the maintenance staff or the custodians. Okay, let's talk about the drawbacks to the turf. So, um, it has a higher initial installation and replacement cost. Um, it is significantly harder than grass. It has, sometimes has an odor, so it can smell kind of like a chemical. If, that depends a lot on the type of infill. So with synthetic turf, you have the, the drainage rock below, and then you have a shock absorbing pad, and then you have um sand and the carpet. And so, um, but in order for all the little blades on the grass to stick up, they put an infill in it. And so you'll see, like, some of the older fields have chrome rubber, the black rubber, which people, you know, don't like, and so things have moved away from black chrome rubber, like, or the newer refurbishments we've done in the district has been with a coated material. And so it's green, it, it's cooler that way, looks nicer, doesn't have the same smell.
What's the mature?
Uh, I think it might be coated rubber. Is that right?
Still.
Sorry.
Alex.
It's, it, it can be, um, like a sand, it's such a painted.
Yeah. So it's still soft, it provides that same impact, there is an absorption.
I heard wrong, is there an option for like cork?
There is.
Cork is a, another option I've heard, it's a better insulator, or not as well?
It is not as soft, correct. Cork is more expensive than, than the coated rubber. Um, but we actually talked to an expert in different infills, and they gave us an idea of what the different cost impacts would be for different types. They also have coconut husk, and what was the other one? Pits?
Rock, um.
Round up all of pits?
Yeah, all of those.
Which, that's what Santa's again.
Yeah. And so there's a variety of options that we can look at and look over, you know, the durability, and then the cost, and then um, and maintenance and things like that. Um, so back to the, the infill, so, you know, if you're using natural product like tur- like cork, it's not gonna have the same smell as if you were using chrome rubber, um, which, you know, is gonna have a, a small, a stronger chemical smell. Um, player's safety, we already talked about this, there's higher incidence of certain injuries, knees, and then also um, skin abrasions, you know, you get choke burn, yeah. Um, and then environmental health concerns, this is one that, that I know gets a lot of talking points in the media, um, particularly in the last six months or so in Santa Clara County. There is concern about the forever chemicals, often referred to as P V O S, um, which are used in manufacturing process and for a lot of products, not just synthetic turf. Um, but there is some concern about those forever chemicals being used. Um, potential, there's a potential for microplastic pollution as turf blades wear down. Um, there's concerns about chemicals leaching into the spill over time as the turf breaks down. Um, it also has a larger carbon footprint in manufacturing than natural grass.
So then, I think, Carlos, you were gonna talk a little bit about the maintenance costs um, of the natural grass versus the.
So, so as a study, we took Country Lane and Moreland Middle, middle school, smaller size than, I'm sorry, middle school, larger size than elementary, uh, smaller size. Uh, so the natural grass, so, uh, we have like different categories, so we, I just broke it down to these two main ones, but if you need more information, we could provide. Um, the maintenance cost, uh, for natural grass, um, for a middle school is about thirty-five thousand dollars a year. The middle school, elementary, the middle school is seventy-five. The water usage is thirty-five to four Country Lane, and about ninety to a hundred and twenty, depending on, on the year, at Moreland Middle School. Uh, so there, there you see the total sixty-five or and a hundred and sixty. Um, when we go down to synthetic, the maintenance cost, this maintenance cost is the two, two to three year projection, because the, when I, I'm anticipating the learning curve with my staff, with my crew, uh, how to use facilities, how to treat it and all that. I'm anticipating that that would give reduce about ten percent on your three and so forth. Um, so, so just worst case scenario, twenty-nine thousand five hundred for Country Lane and sixty-five, five hundred for uh Moreland Middle. And then the water savings, like Stephanie said, that we're still gonna use water, so we're anticipating about twenty-six, which is about um, four thousand dollars less, uh, with water.
You're gonna.
I mean, more, uh, the fourth, the, the deltas for that, I'm sorry. And then, uh, sixty-four thousand dollars for, uh, Moreland Middle.
Of savings.
Of savings.
Savings and losses.
Yeah. So that's where the, the, the big ticket is. I think both Clover and Stephanie mentioned that, 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 uh, you know, the water savings and maintenance, uh, after, I'd say, year three, would be a big significance in savings and and if we go to, to turf.
Carlos, can you, um, just, uh, share is, when you did this calculation, were you considering Country Lane and M M S the entire field being synthetic turf or natural grass, or was it just a piece of it?
This, this is taking account a, uh, soccer size field.
Okay.
So at Country Lane's the whole field. At M M S is probably two-thirds of, of the field.
Perfect, okay.
And one thing that would be, unless you guys already have this, what's, like, at some point, yeah, these are divergent, you know, across, but the initial cost of turf is much, much higher, right? So do we have kind of like a projection of total cost of ownership over a period of time? At what point do they match up? If you don't have it.
We don't have that, but.
Wait, I'm just.
Yeah, yeah, we, we could, we could calculate that. There's been, I think Alex been researching that. Um, you know, again, the, uh, things Stephanie mentioned, that natural grass looks great the first six months, and then it just gets bigger.
Yeah.
And so all the investment in, in trying to keep it up to a standard is, is a cost, and we could figure that.
Yeah, because essentially what, what, what would be useful is for us to be, to know, we have average life span of a synthetic turf, let's say it's.
Ten years.
Ten years. So ten, ten, let's say fifteen, for, you know, kids don't use it as much as, let's say, college athletes do, so we'll assume we'll get fifteen years of life. Fifteen years has a massive initial investment plus, you know, fifteen hundred thirty euro, what does that look like over fifteen years? Plus, you start out with a lower cost for grass, but there's this incremental everything. But at the end of fifteen, are they like, hmm, about the same? And the difference is like, you know, what do we feel from looks and perspective, basic perspective, basic perspective, or is it like, hey, the math actually is like, one is significantly more expensive over the.
Okay. Wouldn't we be able to do that math by looking at the, in the options? The amount of putting in the grass versus the amount of putting in the turf, and then you would just add in the maintenance cost for each year?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure of that. It's just, I don't, I didn't see it right away, and I think it.
Chris is working on it, though.
Thanks. In addition to the maintenance costs, what would it be in terms of personnel to be able to perform, though it said, maintenance duties, what grass? Versus, like, what is, what's the delta in terms of, like, cost of personnel and hours?
The big picture, what, what the, the time saved in, in using with the synthetic field is that, uh, that time saved could get readdressed to like the campus itself.
Right.
And, and right now, you know, with the crew that we have, uh, you know, they're always behind the eight ball. And so this, I'm not selling one, but, you know, using synthetic will, will save a lot of time that we could redirect that time to, to the, to the proper campus.
Should we also take into consideration, um, the, the resources, like where the money can come from for each thing? Meaning like, we can use bond money to put synthetic turf in and save on other expenses, like staffing and stuff like that, adding to the general fund generally, versus natural grass would be an ongoing general fund expense?
Yeah.
Yes?
Yes, yes, there's, you know, uh, again, someone mentioned, you know, less fertilizer, less watering, um, you know, uh, equipment that needs replacement or repair, uh, you know, like twice a year. So there's all that saving that, you know, we, I could calculate, you can bring it back to you if you need.
Can we get that ready for our Friday, our Board Friday report? Okay.
Yeah.
Kind of looking at those different things.
I'm gonna be talking possible, possible. Heather said that's a good point.
Okay. I think we've tried over the years very hard to be as smart as we can be about investing with fund money and trying to create um, savings on the general fund.
Yep.
Okay, so the District Facilities Committee, using the criteria that Clover already outlined, um, in the previous slide, you know, site capacity, et cetera, et cetera, the input from the community, from the site leadership, the site, um, District Facilities Committee came up with four options that we could, we could move forward with, maybe there's another option or two that the board comes with tonight, as far as direction. But these were four that we thought really, um, represented the priorities of, of the parties that, that gave input. So each option has four different categories to it, shade, fields and tracks, multi-use room improvements, and outdoor learning. So as Clover mentioned a few minutes ago, the options, it does seem overwhelming when you look at all of the information that's on there, but there really is a very small difference between.
There are four items that change in the, that's.
Yes, exactly, exactly. So, um, hopefully I can describe that, I can, in a way that's very understandable for you tonight. Okay, so let's start in option A. So this option A does not change in any of the, the first shade item does not change in any of the options. So it's shade structure is at Country Lane and Latimer. So Country Lane, um, does not have enough shade in their lunch area compared to the others. Um, Latimer has long been, I don't wanna say promised, but there was a shade structure that was, was, I guess, allocated to, um, to Latimer a long time ago in Measure K, bless you. And at the time that we were doing the modernization of Latimer Campus, um, the principal at that point didn't feel that it was necessary, or that they knew exactly where they would want to put it, and so we kind of put it on a shelf. And so that sat there on Measure K, and then in Measure M, we kind of put it there on the shelf too. And so the, the shade structure at Latimer was something that was always kind of in the back of our minds. Um, so Latimer would actually like the shade structure to be in the area between the middle school and playground, or middle school, playground and PE area, and the synthetic turf field. So there's gonna be a drawing, and I'll show you this. Um, shade trees at all the campuses is listed on there, and that would be in the playground there, because you have all that asphalt, it's very hot, um, you know, warm summer days, or not summer, but, um, late spring and early fall. So, I'm sorry, the shade structure is about six hundred thousand dollars, shade trees were about two hundred eighty thousand, that's across, um, all the districts. Okay, then moving to fields and tracks, this is the area that changes. Um, but hopefully not too much that's not, well, easily understood. So the first school that's on there is E D S. So E D S is the same, is the same proposed field and track for all the options, so you don't have to think too hard enough. So it's, what's proposed is one synthetic turf field with a decomposed granite track around it. So it, E D S currently has a decomposed granite track, it's the same surfacing that's out here with M M S. So, um, that, and that's about six million dollars. Then M M S is where things change, as, you know, we have the different, so M M S, and this option A is proposed to have one synthetic turf field with a decomposed granite track around it, just like at E D S. That's for about six million dollars. We have another four point three million dollars for M M S and E D S, that's two, that's the next line item. That's intended to improve the remaining grass areas on those campuses, because, as I'll show you when you look at the drawing, you have, in particular, E D S, huge, right? It's got a lot of grass. And so you would address the area where the existing track is, but then you leave the rest of it without anything happening to it. So in this option, you would take four point three million dollars to improve that area, and then the area at M M S that would be left over when you put a new track and field.
Well, what, what it look like for this improvement? Like new grass in, is it watering, filling the hole, and yeah.
So the idea is that we would do everything that we can. We don't know at this point, the four point three million dollars was kind of, when we were doing this exercise, was like what was left over. So we would need to look at, you know, the actual, uh, the actual square footage and the irrigation systems, you know, what would have to happen, have, what would have to happen with those? If we need to increase the pressure, then we, you know, there's more that goes into, we need pumps and things like that, so. So we don't know, but we feel like that would take care of making the, the grass, you know, much better conditioned than it is right now in all the areas.
Is it currently unusable, or students using it, but not really safe? What's the, the changes?
It, uh, it's usable, it's not ideal, and it's, uh, you know, when other teams come and play against us in our fields, you know, they may come. It, it's not, uh.
And they won't play on E D S's field.
Yeah.
You won't play soccer. E D S is probably in the worst condition, but, um, less usable.
And when we, uh, I mean, this gets a little further into the design phase, but, uh, you know, the goal is to make, let's say at E D S, make two soccer fields. There's a lot more space than that, so maybe we do two and a half, but the remainder does not have to be grass. So we don't have to maintain it as grass. We can maintain it as some other type of planting or, or circulation area or something. So it reduces our, our footprint, so we can afford it.
I'm, I'm actually concerned about the E D S, that four point three, just looking at the pictures for E D S and how we're last time talked about. For the irrigation system was, because. I guess that's.
Are you looking at the aerial view?
Yeah. Aerial view of.
I don't know that I can.
Can you read this?
It's, it's.
If you go to, to E D S, skip ahead with this thing, keep going, there's E D S.
Yeah, right. So yeah, that's one where I'm concerned about. That, that area being in such a bad state, that would four point three be enough to do that? And on the drawing page, you have Moreland. Uh, we just skip one more slide. On the, on the left hand side is also a large field, between the bus people and the new synthetic turf. I'm just concerned if that's gonna be enough, but that's, that's something that I get.
Yeah, we will, we're gonna study, we don't know for sure, we think that it's gonna be enough, but we don't know for sure until we really dig into it.
And if it's grass, it will still, when we went to the pros and cons, the grass is still the same, pros and cons.
Do we know? We know, I know, I have a big recollection at one of the committee meetings talking about principals and how they use those fields. Because I know there's a, um, in EDS, there's a line of sight issue, so they don't necessarily use. That entire space or.
Um, right, so they, if you can see this picture, if you can see this, they basically use. This right here, they use the back of this building as the don't go past.
God.
So this space is actually not used for recess, PE, you know, daily instruction or daily play with the kids.
What is this, like, sports or sport and stuff?
But, but because it's in such poor condition, we actually don't use it for soccer either. So it's kind of not being used, um, with the exception of a cross-country meet that occurs once a year on this campus.
But we would like to use.
Um, for supervi- for supervision, if you were to ask Sherry. They don't want the children to go beyond the line of sight of this building because then it would become a supervisory issue. So yes, you could potentially use it for PE, but you would not use this all for recess because it's a supervision issue. You, you, you know, you could also use this over here for, for lunch or, or recess and such.
Okay, do you mind going back to the option A page so I can finish that? Okay, um, then at the, moving on to the next item, so at the elementary schools that don't currently have. Synthetic turf field or a new, a new condition field, that's Baker Country Lane in Payne. What the, the District Facilities Committee looked at was recommending a combination of synthetic turf and grass, and I'll show you what that looks like in a minute. But that would be about eight point eight million dollars. And then the next slide item is Latimer, that's refurbishing their existing synthetic turf field because it's. Eleven years, I'm going to say right now, um, oh, and so that would be about six hundred fifty thousand. So then the next category is multi-use room improvements. So at EDS, um, they have, well, there's different issues at EDS, but um, they have a. A P, indoor PE issue and then a spectator seating issue.
Yeah.
And the multi-use room. So um, they have a stage in the existing multi-use room that really isn't used. It's not a great size, the shape of the room is narrow, it's not, it's just, yeah, from sight lines, it's not a great, uh, great. Proportions of stage. So um, they would like to remove the stage from that space behind the proscenium. And convert it really into a classroom space that could be used, that could be used for indoor PE. And then, um, so the other benefit to that is that. When there are games in there, volleyball, they don't play much basketball in there because they don't have enough space in the sides, but they do play volleyball there. Um, they could put a folding bleacher that can move and then they could do spectator seating.
Mm-hmm.
On those bleachers, which would then get people out of the sides of the.
On the shop side?
Correct, yeah. Right now they do sit on the stage, but you know, it's chairs, so you don't, you can't see if you're, you know, two, two people behind. So, um, so there's about a million dollars is what we estimated for that. And then the other schools would, um, would get replaced. We would replace the folding tables, the ones that fold into the walls, but they pull down. Um, a lot of them are broken, are really heavy, or just the, the staff doesn't feel that they are. You know, safe or, or managed, easily managed. So we put about seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars across the district for that.
Stephanie?
Yeah, so, um, did, did we connect with principals on their use for the MU's for eating spaces? Like would they pull them down if they were safe and light enough to do? I don't remember.
So, so we did, we did talk to them and it's uh. Half of them will use them and the other half say, I would rather use the money to. To, to paint or to do.
Yeah. And then out, and oh, I should say, I mean.
But this is going back to the District Facilities Committee saying every school should have.
Correct.
Right?
Yes.
Where this kind of is coming.
Correct, yeah.
It's the, what's the baseline that every school should have, a functional MU room that has seating?
Um, yeah, and some of them. Right, and some of them might actually be able to be repaired instead of replaced. Um, we haven't looked into that yet. And then outdoor learning was the other category that pretty much every principal mentioned, um. They would, so Anderson, they have a grass field area. Kind of, it's actually to the right of the synthetic turf field that they use for every day for, for recess. Um, that area, it's in really poor condition, they don't really need another grass area because they have the big field. And so they would like to make that into an outdoor learning area. So that was something that was being proposed in this option. And then at Baker, Country Lane, Latimer and Payne, which are the schools in the district that don't currently have outdoor learning areas. Because MMS and, and EDS already have them, um, we would add a small outdoor learning area to those campuses.
Oh, that'd look like, would look like one of those EDS with the.
Like an amphitheater kind of thing. I, yeah, I mean, that's a possibility. Um, we would really need to dive in to what the principals really want to do out there. And it depends on the school, to be honest, because at Country Lane, for example, they were really focused on having an outdoor performance area. Because, well, all the schools that their multi-use rooms are not big enough to have performances, other than, you know, maybe like a couple classes. And so they're looking for an area that they could do outdoor performances. But then they also want to be able to do, you know, break out and do classrooms outside or have assemblies or all the things that Clover mentioned before.
Like a lot of the schools mentioned, um, like having outdoor chess tables and. Um, some sensory, like for our neurodiverse students, having something, I remember at Latimer in there. So if you look at the big document and you look at what people put on the post-its on the out. Really came under the twenty-first century learning environments, which is where the outdoor learning kind of conversation came in. You can see what the community members were saying on their post-its and where they put the, the dots. So it wasn't just the principals, it was also like in the community meeting. So I think you'd want to go back and look and see like, well, what did the Country Lane community say about this?
But wouldn't it be something like a covered area, like at MMS, uh, sorry, at EDS we have. You know, by the pumpkin patch, you have that covered area.
Not a co- I don't think we're looking at covered.
No.
So this is under the outdoor lo- learning category, but are we looking at like, like putting in structures, physical structures versus like. When it says renovate grass, are we still talking about the grass itself? Or is that?
We're talking about turning the grass into something else. So I'll just say.
But not like upkeeping the grass and making.
Correct, correct, yes. So I'll just speak to Anderson and it was Tasha who. You know, originally this came up with, um, now of course Jody's there, but, um. The idea of having a space that a little bit like that. Came by, where you have different, you might have some areas where there's, you know, tables that, you know, are fixed. That students can, you know, play games or, or maybe it's like, Clover said, a chess table, they have, you know, ones you can buy like that. Then there might be an area where you can just sit. You know, there's, there's kids who want to do things that are not, you know, playground related and not ball related. And so they're looking for a space for those things to happen.
Yeah.
And that would be during recess, but then of course there's the whole educational teaching part that can occur.
We just finished, finished something at Payne, right in the front there that has a couple of picnic tables and some. Uh, uh, stone benches that create a little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was awesome. Like I think when we talked to Chris, that was one of the things that he was more interested in is outside the classroom, right? That you can have a space where kids could just go outside and, and maybe work on something together, doing project learning project or something. Okay, so let's just look at the drawings really quickly. There's. It was, all the schools had a plan for the first option, but then I forgot it's only MMS, so. Um, so just to orient you, the Anderson, um, the main entry to the campus is on the top of this image. So you see where it says admin office, that's the main entry and then the field is the bar. So the area that we're talking about where they proposed the outdoor learning area is the yellow. Thank you, Ben away. And, um, and so then let's go to Baker. So Baker, again, um, the entry to the campus and the main parking lots on Buckmull are at the bottom. And then Wood Glen on the, on the right side. The fields are in the back. So there, as I said before, there was a proposed combination of fields. So the, right now it's the bigger one is synthetic turf and the smaller one is natural grass. Could be flipped, but the idea is that you, you lay it out so that you get an entire field on the surface, not. You know, cut it down the middle and then you're running on one surface to go to the other. Um, so that's the idea there at Baker.
Was, was there a reason the combo came up?
Um, yeah, it came up, um, as far as cost is concerned, uh, cost for the initial installation and then. Kind of to, to address some of the, the concerns like heat, for example, um, and then also the maintenance costs. Yeah, so, and I would think cost was, was the biggest driver. I mean, Heather and Shri Ram were there, but, um, that's my impression. Okay, and then Country Lane, um, does everybody know where this is? So the, the parking lot, the existing parking lot's on the bottom. We don't, no, we don't know, because we don't like, we don't know what exactly it's going to be and we need to talk about. There's just a lot that goes into the design of it, so.
Yeah, and they just built this garden.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I think Country Lane's in the middle of building one, I think Payne was promised one, um.
Okay.
As part of this bond. Oh yeah, okay. Okay. We have a lot of people in the audience. Um, so now we're, we're going to.
So Country Lane, Latimer is refurbishing the existing field. So, and then the shade structure is the area where it's kind of dashed in yellow. They would like to do a shade structure there.
Yep. They do have shade structure for like lunch, but this would be an ideal place for shade structure after cooking with.
Oh, and the other thing is they would like us, um, the existing shade canopies that are over the doors in the multi-use building. That are like slats, I didn't design it. That was like to remind people of that, it's, it's a product that you buy. Um, but it, it doesn't provide, um, it provides shade, but the rain is an issue. And so they would like us to make it solid so that we can, so that they can use that area for lunch all year round.
And then the, the play areas are something that's going on separate here.
That's.
Yeah. Unrelated to this, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
While we're on the, Latimer. Do we, did we look at that, that brass field at all over here? Yes.
That is not included in any of the options that we have right now. Yeah. Okay, and then, um, Payne is the biggest field actually that you have and the most regular size, so we can get full. Field on there, um, and then a little one off to the side. And then let's go to, I think EDS is next. So EDS, um, basically the, the new synthetic turf field with the decomposed granite track. Could go where the existing one is, that would be the least expensive way to do it. Because it's already degraded and we would just have to do some regrading, but it wouldn't be as big of an effort as putting it somewhere else. Um, then. Okay, sorry, then MMS, um, you'll see the existing track kind of sticks out there in the middle. Where Clover is pointing, so that, that track is not regulation sized, so we can't fit. The track in this direction because it. Yeah, previous.
So it's real.
Yes, so we had to turn it ninety degrees.
This is where the track is right now, if you can.
Yes. Yeah, it's much smaller, much smaller. So if you were doing your running around there, you had an awesome mile time, but it wasn't. So. So, um, so that would be decomposed granite, um, track is what's in option A. Okay, so option B is, I'm just going to talk about the things that are different. Okay, so fields and tracks at MMS, the difference here is that it would be a rubberized track. So again, that's, that's an asphalt track, but it has rubber surface on top of it. You see that at all the local high schools. I mean, Olympics, like any field that's like high, high level field is going to have a rubberized track like that or, or a similar surface. Um, so that cost for the track and the field goes up to ten million four hundred thousand. So it's a significant cost increase. So what that means is that that four point three million dollars that we had allocated in option A to renovate or. You know, improve the existing grass areas that are going to remain will not be there. So we would basically, EDS, end up with a synthetic turf field with a decomposed granite track around it. And then we would not be able to do, you know, pretty much anything at this point. Um, until we kind of firm up numbers and stuff, maybe if we can, we will.
Can we get a quick, like, comparison of what the decomposed granite track versus?
Yeah, sure. So, um, decomposed granite track is as much cheaper as you see. Um, it requires, um, more maintenance in terms of filling and folds and things. How many years, times a year do you go then and? To break it and.
Uh, about twice, maybe three times a year we need to do it. You know, when it rains, unfortunately, people walk on it and create.
Yeah, it gets low spots, then it fills with water and then, you know, it becomes a little bit problematic. But, uh, but it's a good surface, you know, I mean, we actually did, um, on Google Earth. We looked at all of the, or middle schools rather, in the South Bedding, we went all the way to Palo Alto, all the way down to like. East San Jose, I don't think we went all the way to Morgan Hill, but there were like. Four, two, two, I think two middle schools that had a rubberized turf. Mm-hmm, yeah, high schools, it's very much the standard middle school. And it was actually two middle schools in Mount Viovo. And, oh, I'm sorry, and then, um, union middle schools, maybe they're. Um, but those are the only ones that at this point. Okay, so, um, that's the big difference. Um, all the other stuff is the same for this lineup, so it's just rubberized track at MMS instead of decomposed grass. Okay, so option C, oh, that's what it looks like. I just did, it's just a different color. Just a different color around the track. Okay, so let's go to option C. So this one doesn't fit within our budget, but as Clover mentioned earlier, we thought it was. Good information for you all to see. So the, under the shade, it's exactly the same. Um, under fields and tracks, the difference here, EDS track is the same. This is a combination of the ele- the elementary schools, the same, Latimer is the same, the difference is MMS. So what we have shown here is one synthetic turf field with a rubberized track around it and then one grass field. So the idea with doing two fields at, at MMS is that. Latimer and MMS could use the fields concurrently. So you could have, because you know, Latimer currently is using Payne's field. Once upon a time, they were using Coventry's field, um, and so MMS is walking distance from Latimer. So it would be a lot convenient for them, I would think anyway. Um, and, um, and the two schools really do have a lot of, um, things that they do together. I know Teresa was excited about the possibility of having Latimer using that campus as well. Um, so that ends up being about fourteen point seven million dollars for MMS. Um, and we took out the, um, the outdoor learning areas at the other schools at, what was it? Um.
Baker.
Yes, Baker, Country Lane, Latimer. Payne, thank you. Um, and so. Then we'd also have to cut out another like one point seven five million dollars in order to, to make this option. So this was kind of an impetus for us to pr- produce option D. And option D is like a, a more affordable version of option C. So again, the shade is the same, um, the fields and tracks is, is basically at MMS. We would do one synthetic turf field with decomposed granite track instead of rubber and then one grass field.
And then you say one grass field, brand new grass, right?
Yes, brand new. So do you mind going to the, the drawing and I'll just show you? So one thing that I wanted to point out is that, um, you can kind of see, I don't know if my. Oh, thank you. Okay, so sorry for the people that are looking the other way, but, um. If you look right here, it's kind of hitting right now, but the Bus Depot MOT yard is, goes like this. So if we wanted to have another field, we would need to reconfigure the. So if we wanted to have another field, we would need to reconfigure the MOT yard. Um, but we feel like it's really possible to, to do it efficiently and get the same amount of storage space and have it really function well for buses, parking and everything, and then all the other, um, needs that they have. And so if we reconfigure that, then we have now have a big enough space that we can put in another field.
A grass.
A grass field, yeah. So that, that was the same thing in option C as well, we just skipped the run-up drying.
And the cost includes the reconfiguration?
Correct, correct, yeah.
The entrance which will be the same, except we lose that little arch.
So far as the, are we looking at like a standard, like sort of like track with?
Yeah.
Eight lanes?
Eight lanes is what we desire.
Option four.
Well, there's a six lane, but I don't think that often.
Yeah, not for the.
Because I think for a middle, I don't know if we need that. I'm just curious.
So the, the, I guess the issue would be that if you have a smaller field, then you have to have more heats and so that runs longer and they're already super long. If your children did middle, or middle school track and wheel. So, um, but I mean, it does cost more money, but when you've got all the equipment out there doing the work, you know, the, it's an incremental increase to do eight lanes. But eight lanes is what was actually costed out, to answer your question.
What was the size of the, um, asphalt at the elementaries? Some of these, elementaries?
The tracks? Yeah, so we put it into the cost of the field. Um, so because if we did synthetic turf, we probably wouldn't do the asphalt. We would, like Clover said earlier, we would just do a different color around the outside to make it a, a track, so it would be distinguishable as a track.
But it would still be turf, turf.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So to be, to be determined, there's, we, we included that in the cost of the field. So we can determine that later, whether or not.
Oh wait, so it says, but it says proposed asphalt.
Yes, but when they did the costing.
It, they assumed.
They assumed that it was gonna be asphalt. And then if we end up doing synthetic turf, then it basically that goes away, but it becomes, maybe it gets bigger, the, the, it gets a little bigger. Right now, it's, it's a crazy plan for asphalt. It's currently, it depends on the school, it would definitely be asphalt or we use synthetic turf. It really depends on the direction that we get as far as synthetic versus natural, because you wouldn't do a track on natural grass, right? Um, so it depends on the direction that we get and, um, yeah. You, I mean, for this instance, in an elementary school where it's pretty much just walking, right? Kids walk during PE or they walk during recess, or they have the walking club or walk-a-fonds, you know, for that sort of thing, you could do that. You wouldn't do it for competition.
Okay, kids in an elementary school or practice probably okay.
Yeah, I was curious how wide, like how many lanes or how big.
Yes, so most of the schools, the principals did request that at a new, if we did a new track, that it's wider than the ones that they have.
The ones that are there.
Yeah, they wanted to have it so like you could have at least three people walking next to each other. Um, and so that's what we would do. I think I actually showed, I can't see it.
Big, right, because that's for the.
Baker is big on the side where it's part of the asphalt paving, but on the side towards the fence. It's, it's actually, yeah, it's narrow.
Oh, certainly the same thing happens at.
It's the same size, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That causes issues.
So I think we, I think we need direction. I think the easiest one to get direction on is, should we be putting a full-on rubberized track around MMS? Which leaves really nothing left to invest in fixing, um, other parts of our fields in other places. So that, that is really like probably the biggest ticket item. It's a, about a four and a half million dollar additional cost to do a, a full-on rubberized track versus a, um, decomposed granite. So my understanding is almost all the middle schools in this region have decomposed granite. There may be one middle school.
There's three.
There's three in the whole, like Santa Clara County area.
Two in Amview and one in Union Station.
That have the rubberized track at a middle school. So that is probably the big ticket item where we need to know, like.
Can we take off from C off table? Because from a budgetary perspective, is that.
That's all work from a gas backness.
Because, um, because B includes rubberized track too.
Yeah, but I, I would consider taking C off as well as the rubberized track. I agree, I don't know if that's necessary, if it's nice. It would be great to improve both, all of these things. But I do feel that the, maybe not necessarily that need, uh, simply because it's the middle schools all, when they do perform, they're at a, they're at proper. And that has proper seating for events, large events such as those, even if we were to close, we, we don't have quite, quite the seating to be able to do that here, so. I'm not really.
Yeah, I think.
I'm thinking the rubber track is a little over, overmuch.
Um, one question on, uh, EDS, because I think if we do the rubber and what we take off the table is improving the grass field that MMS media, right?
Right.
Um, today, the reason especially EDS is a very large, uh, area that we saw is in fourth state because of lack of funds or because of just the, we just, you know, care. Because what I'm concerned about is if, like what's stopping us from doing it today?
Other funds. Right now, it's, uh, lack of funds. I mean, it, uh, it just got away from the district, you know, and the, uh, didn't fertilize it and didn't re-treat it correctly, you know, here's and here's. Um, and now it's.
Turned around.
So, uh.
If you wanna maintain grass fields the way that you, to keep them looking pristine, you would need to have probably two more grounds people and then you would need to invest in much more water and a different irrigation system. And making sure that we are maintaining at that level is very costly. And that, I think, what was the school district? They put in grass and then they pulled it out. Last status elementary, they decided to go with grass and then what, a year or two later?
Two years, they're already chucked. So that brings us to A versus B.
Correct.
Well, then, um, the, then the question to me, I guess, is if we were to invest in improving the grass fields at MMS, EDS and get them to a usable state, how do we make sure that five years from now, ten years from now, EDS is not back in that same state?
Where it is right now.
Where it is right now and we, we all feel like we didn't make a dent.
And I think also with that, my question would be like, I feel like we don't really have a clear idea of how that space will be used, in, especially in the backside of EDS. And so, let me think about now and what the impact they would have for our students now. Um, I'm wondering, yeah, and I'm thinking, yeah, because there's no true direction yet. I'm wondering if option D could be, um, more beneficial. Yeah, for our students.
For the students now.
And then even with being able to have the, the Latimer students on MMS campus, I think it's okay for the world. I think strengthens like our districts, like inter-school. Just being, do that as well, Latimer also, then gets like, kind of like their own field, not really, like, you know?
Yeah.
For most of them.
Yeah, most, yeah, so that's kind of where my mind is going currently. I do think, like, I'm sure I made a good point, like, but if we do invest in the improvement of the fields and MMS and EDS, we improve it, I, I think the question is like, and then what? Exactly, how do we maintain it? What is it gonna be useful?
Is it gonna be useful to, you know? Uh, it's like, yeah, it's like A and D are the core operating. Right, but over fifteen years, is it like thousands of dollars, hundreds of thousands of dollars? And where would we, where would we find the money to, to do that? Because I'd hate to sink in four point three million dollars in improving the remaining grass field areas at MMS, EDS. And A, they don't get to use, like you said, it looked great, but they don't get to use.
By our students. By our students.
My, uh, my other thought is like, how are we able to also, um, utilize that? Since we also rented out to teams that if they have a.
Yeah.
A designated area of field for that, we can also barter that. If we have the grass field and the, and the turf field, how we're gonna be able to completely utilize that to our advantage in terms of.
Revenue.
Revenue. Revenue generating.
Leave the space.
Because then it becomes much more, it, it becomes much more attractive then for later.
Option E, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, to that point, option A, if you were to invest in making the fields better, I totally agree with the, the concern. I, I share the concern that it's going to be not in great condition and you'll regret that, you know, that we put the money into it. Investing in the EDS fields, though, you would be investing in that area. You would be investing for field, for lease revenue, not really for student use, right?
Which is okay, which is fine, they might, if, if that gives us the impetus to maintain it every year, to maximize lease revenue, I'm all for it. But right now, it's gotten to the point where probably not getting a dollar out of it, because nobody's gonna lease that with the condition it is right now.
Well, it is being leased.
Oh, I mean.
It is being leased right now. Um, I'm seeing the circles. Yeah, I mean, open field is, is a.
Yeah.
Yeah, then maybe that's.
What other important ideas do we need to put on the table? For us to consider? I hear that the rubberized track at MMS is a no-go.
It's not nice to have.
Nice to have, no.
What, if, for option D, is there any wiggle room where we can also try to do a little bit of the improvement of the grass areas at MMS and EDS, maybe not the full at four point three?
I think this is gonna get a brand new grass.
Yeah, oh, sorry, we saw. Sorry, yeah, yeah. Is there any wiggle room to maybe?
It really depends what the cost can be when we bid it out.
And we can do good alternates where we include in the area, um, as an alternate. And then if we get good pricing and we have the money to do it, we can do it. Um, you know, our job is basically to get the most project that you can, that we can get for the district for the budget that we have. So we will absolutely try to do as much as we can to get fields for students and all that.
That'd be great.
So generally speaking, is everyone kind of in support of the synthetic turf slash natural grass combo? Or?
I'm, mm. I think qualitatively, I'm fine. Quantitatively, I think without having that proper possibility. I think it'll be a little bit, we, it'll be difficult to make it.
Okay.
Right, because I, I, we wouldn't know what we're committing ourselves to.
For the mix.
So you're talking about, asking about a combo of either both?
Right, okay. Because of the total cost of ownership, let's just say ten years, because what I'm hearing is eleven years is like.
Ten years, ten to twelve years. About expected.
If the total cost of a grass field to maintain and the total cost of maintaining and input, inputting, like if it's relatively the same, do we lean one way or the other?
I'd lean towards synthetic, because I think we'll.
If, um, if the total cost to maintain grass is significantly cheaper, does that make a difference? Which I don't think it is.
I don't think it is. I don't think it is, but I don't know whether it's in what the magnitude of difference is.
Okay, okay. Let's put that in the board Friday report, but into the map, so that at least you guys have that information and then we can kind of just circle back around turf, grass, turf versus grass, make sure of that, at least we know that. Are we looking at the type of projects in option D is the preferable type of project, projects that we're thinking about?
I'm towards. Between A and D.
Somewhere between A and D.
More towards D.
Mm-hmm. But wanting to figure out how we maintain all the other parts of our property like EDS that is huge, and what do we do to make that look?
Yeah.
Make it usable.
And make it.
Exactly.
Exactly.
Yeah, I guess what I like about A is that every campus was getting some natural grass, except for Latimer, which is why I asked about that space in particular. Um, I'm not a huge fan of synthetic turf, just generally, but I acknowledge why it's beneficial and, and, um, I keep thinking back to, um, Clover's comments about wanting to make sure we have a surf, a big surface year round for the kids to use. And so, so I get it, um, but I, I really just, I really want some natural grass on, on regions.
Campaigns somewhere.
So that there is somewhere cool to just sit and. Easy, so to speak.
Uh, yeah, I agree with you, because which is why I'm liking that, you know, almost all of the campuses you guys did. Porchered all the way to the end.
Right.
I agree with you, some places where you can touch.
Touch natural grass, literally.
Yeah, I think A and D actually would have, would have a combination in each campus.
Yeah.
D, so D, um, has the amphitheaters and the additional field at MMS. It does not have any natural grass at EDS or Latimer.
So, well, the existing grass at EDS, the area we were talking about, that would be still there, right? So it wouldn't be improved maybe, is that what you mean?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Not, it's just not.
Latimer's grass area is actually not that bad.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and the PE goes there and uses it actually.
Well, that's great.
Yeah, so it would just be EDS, but I feel like, you know, we will do our best to crunch numbers and, and try to improve as much of EDS as we can, um, so that we can get, keep some usable natural grass.
Well, I think focusing on the actual space that they use or the line, yeah, that is a very small space and that's. Priorities. So I was gonna say, if we could somehow, you know, improve even that area in some, in, in somewhere in our budget, then that, I think that would be like the priority and that would be most ideal.
Okay.
No, I think that, that is, that is a good goal. I think we could really get to that. I mean, there, that's so much.
We're there.
It's, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the area that you take the back of the building, you'll draw like a regular line.
Where they use it for recess.
They use it for recess. So speaking of recess, um, there was a friend of mine, the math was up there. The new track.
At which, which school?
At MMS.
Okay.
Did I not say that part? Sorry.
In which one?
This one? It doesn't really matter, um. That where the track is now surrounding the synthetic turf, that is the grass area where they primarily have recess, is that right?
Correct.
So how would they use the space differently?
They would use the synthetic turf area, yeah. Yeah, so they have like, um, volleyball nets set up right now that they're really enjoying using. They would just put them, we would put them in the synthetic turf area, we'd have to put sleeves in or something. So we would protect it, but yeah. I know there's a lot of effort being made at MMS for clubs and activities all the time and.
I do know that Teresa really liked this option, if we're talking about the principal of MMS. Like, she did like this idea, as did, I believe, Latimer, because they invite two full-size fields.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess for me, I was leaning towards A because again, the natural turf, the natural grass, um, is really important to me. Um, but understanding that field would be targeted for Lamers use kind of is a game changer in my.
Well, am I saying correctly that the parking in that area where the whole part, portion of the track is gonna be?
That would be, yeah, we would basically take out the, um, the grass and the synthetic turf and, and regrade it and it would be asphalt. Because they, they park so many buses and maintenance vehicles in that space. It's like a parking lot essentially. And part of it is already paved, so, yeah. But that was, the cost to do that was included in the option D number, it's there. Including some fence, because we'd have to redo the fences between, that are, that are not our new fences, they're all.
Just out of curiosity for, um, option C, did we have identified? How would we cover that?
how would we cover that cost with fence? No, we just wanted to make sure that since we had a robust discussion about it in the committee, that the public knew, A, we had it, we did consider it. And that, B, we wanted you to know we had a discussion and consider it. And if you were to tell us, oh, no, I really want that, then we would have to make some other readjustments somewhere. Just hoping for a pot of gold. Just a little. Um, okay, here's what I heard. We pretty much like the combination of an option A, D. We like A because it's just more natural grass, fixing some of our other kind of fields in EDS. Option D, we like because it's got the second soccer field at Latimer, which then serves both schools, both communities. Um, you would like for us to get the true cost of, um, grass versus turf over a ten-year period of time. You, but you are leaning like of a field, but you are leaning towards a combination of synthetic and grass, but you would like that additional information. Okay, was there anything else for us to consider before we move forward with claiming? We should probably make work study sessions ninety minutes, not. Uh, I just, I wanted to share, I've already shared it with Clover, but, um, I wanted to thank Clover and the entire team with the committee work that was done. Um. I specifically, uh, had experience in years past where decision-making was done differently, very differently in Moreland. And, um, it's what drove me to want to serve on the committee, because I felt like I needed to see it in action. And, um, I have been so impressed, just absolutely impressed. This big doc and all the links and I feel like I spent days just digging through it. Um, and so I just want to thank you and the team for listening to the board. Um, and our desire to really connect, uh, with the community and our leadership at each of the sites, because this is, you know, kind of the last, the last little bit of bond money we have in this bond. But it's really been a very, um, inclusive, um, engaging process. And I just, I'm pers- personally very excited about what has come out of it as a result. So I just wanted to thank you for all of your hard work and countless hours put into, uh, collecting all of that data. I mean, it's a tremendous amount of data. Thank you, thank you, um, everybody. And I think with that. Do you feel like you have enough guidance? Have enough guidance. Um, and if anything should change drastically because of the Friday board report information, um, you'll let us know within the next couple of weeks. We can always put it on a future agenda to just, okay, check in with the rest of the board.
Okay.
If that would be. I know we're on a timeline too, so one of the, one of the, I guess, um, questions is timing, given the constantly rising costs associated with the project. So what is, what is your goal, your deadline to hear from us?
Well. I, we see this as a, um, two-season project. We, we can't, uh, knock down all the schools at once, because it, it's not going to take a summer. It's going to take six to nine months to do something.
Okay.
Especially at the bigger campuses. So we, we tackle MMS first or EDS first. The other campus doesn't get in touch until the next cycle or the next season. So, uh.
Or?
Or.
Do you do the elementary schools first, get them done and then?
It's two summers is essentially what.
Two, two.
So it's going to be.
This summer, this year is, uh, a lot of meeting with the principals and kind of fine tuning the campuses, you know, designing and all that. And hopefully next summer, we could start an elementary school. Uh, when I say the, the two big campuses, I'm tying in a couple of elementary schools in there too, because the elementary schools are, are kind of slender. We probably could do that in, in the summer. Um, but, but the bigger campuses will take a, a long time.
When we do that construction and it's going to be throughout the school year, how would that affect like the students? In terms of like where they're going to be.
It will, it will affect them. It will affect their play area. We need to kind of mitigate that and figure out how, you know, we need to kind of, uh, negotiate with the principal and the staff and, you know, want to do things and when not to.
It's not unusual to do that. And we have done that before where there's construction onsite and the kids can't play in certain areas because that's going and so that that, but we'll have to work out the logistics and the timing on that in principle. And that's specific to each of the sites and the projects.
And we did that when we did Latimer, when we reopened Latimer. We didn't do the field project during the summertime because, well, there was a lot of stuff happening, but, um, I don't remember all the specifics, but we did it in the fall. We got much better pricing in the fall. And they basically just didn't use grass area for that period of time.
I'm sure it's going to crush many kids' hearts when, especially at MMS, when they don't have to do the mile.
I'm sure they'll think. Just on that note, I received a lot of really positive feedback about when the, um, fencing has gone in and how we consider it. Um, those crews were.
Okay.
Yeah.
You know, pausing when need be and staying out of the way. And so, thank you for making sure that's also happening.
Yeah, that was Alex's crew.
Fabulous. Well, lots of good feedback. Thank you. I think we have enough. Let's take a two-minute break because we've got kiddo waiting. Thank you guys so much.